What we would have is there'd be a petition to annex the Clifftown publics filed on October 20. Once we have that filed, this council will then consider on first reading an ordinance to annex the Clifftowns on the 24th, however, it would not be up for vote, just a first reading. And there would also be a first reading of a, I'm sorry, resolution as far as a funding agreement. First reading only on October 24th. Then, after November 2nd, we have what we expect to be a change of the law. That will be very advantageous to the city's course proceeding with these bonds that will go to revenues. And then on November 14th, hopefully with a new change in the law, we would proceed with a vote to approve a funding agreement for proposed revenue bonds for the Town Madison district and access, accept a bid for base supply overs. And we would also at that same meeting consider the annexation of publics. So all this will basically come together on November 14th. We have a first reading this Monday for all this. And then this timeline that I've mentioned here on the letter agreement, page two of tab three, this lays out the order of what we expect to happen and when it has to happen. So there's a bit of a tight timeline here, but it all really culminates November 14th with that vote to determine, to determine this individual event. What we propose here is a resolution for the council to consider, a concept to the overall timeline. Now each one of these components still have to be debated. Each one of these components still have to be approved and have to be voted on. But what we have got here is just a general letter agreement that we'd like the council to read through this resolution to determine whether or not they want to embark on this timeline and whether this is an agreement that we can at least in a concept reach in moving forward. So there's a bunch of big parts. Like I said, we have here to speak to the financials, we've got Mr. Rush Rice here. And we also have available Preston Bolt outside council who's been working diligently on the funding agreement. He can speak to some of the details of that. And we have in your mind also a copy of what's a funding agreement that is tentative. It's still, unfortunately, there's still some terms that have to be worked out. But he can give us the broad picture, explain ultimately what, how this is going to be structured and how it's going to come about. So after talking with Mr. Rice, we have Mr. Bolt. And of course, President Shaw, Councilperson Bartlett have been instrumental in negotiations. So they may have some more information as far as particulars of how this came together. But I'd be happy to discuss with council the ins and outs of the agreement. But there are problems, sensitive areas that we might need to be careful, you know, we might introduce this in the executive session, but I'd be happy to address that. But having said that, we'd like to turn it over to Mr. Rice to study the project.
Thanks very much. I've never used one of these laser pointers before this. Thanks very much. I'm Rush Rice. I'm actually advisory firm Rice Advisory. We were engaged by the city in March of 2021 on this project that's been going on for a while with the general, the general mission to determine from 35,000 feet, is this a good deal for the city of Madison? That's exactly, that's kind of been a nutshell of what we're doing here. We were provided with a lot of estimates and forecasts and a lot of things that were gonna happen, hopefully gonna happen at Town Madison. Town Madison is a very ambitious development that has got a lot of, got a lot of forces. And this is a very exciting engagement for our firm to take on, who enjoy the work. We wanted to assess and see how realistic the developers' estimates were because that's ultimately what's gonna pay for all of everything that's out there is the sales taxes, the adware taxes, the liquor taxes in the, the hotel taxes that come off of Town Madison are gonna pay for all of this, all of the infrastructure of Town Madison and the I-565 interchange. We wanted to evaluate what the best financing, financing options to do this. There would be, if the, if the district, if the district did, the district could do the financing itself. But then 100% of the tax revenues would flow to the district for, until they pay their debt off. And that could be a whole kid in the boot, $85 million when it's all said and done. The city would have to be very patient to derive any benefit. So we wanted to come up with maybe a better financing structure so that the city could immediately begin to see some benefit. We wanted to evaluate the risks because debt never sleeps. Debt, debt, debt goes on and on and the debt has to be repaid. So we want to evaluate, are these, are these tax revenues, property tax revenues, that we use conservative forecasting methods? As the developer done that, are these realistic, are these attainable? And do we have a large margin of safety? Wanted to determine that. The finance, and then we want to, you know, and then when we get down to it, we, our firm will provide the oversight of the structuring, the marketing, the sale and closing of the two respective bond issues that will pay for all of this. And on the city's piece, my good friend Johnny Dill, the person with their company that spent a lot of work for the city, they would be the underwriter of the city's bonds. They have a naturally a very long track record. Johnny and I have had the most confidence in Johnny. We've been friends and colleagues and competitors and coworkers for a long time. And he, he wears time. I didn't wear my time because I lost some of mine to the other law. So we went through that, we started like I said, March of 2021. The first, the first thing we determined, these are some, this, this is our assessment of what the developers gave, what they provided us all off for the last year and a half. Our initial analysis reveals that they provide a cash flow forecast that was well conceived and more importantly is conservative. A tangible example, the first apartment complex that was completed in Town Madison was originally called the Station. It's now called the Ballpark. The developers used an estimate, in apartment lingo, the valuation they used was $140,000 per dollar. That's, that's, I learned a lot of things. That's apartment lingo for per apartment. That when that thing sold, it would sell for $140,000 per dollar, thereby establishing the value that we based the property taxes off of. So we go from a piece of raw land that's generating essentially no property taxes to an occupied apartment complex that's generating tremendous property taxes. Well, that was the first one to be completed and sold. It actually sold for something north of $250,000 a dollar. It was the highest value achieved for an apartment complex in Alabama, I think, ever. So that was, that helped us, like, this is, this is conservative. We went and looked at all of these retailers, you know, what kind of sales did they generate per square foot? All the data that's available in the industry and found that it's in fact pretty, you know, the, the analysis was, was conservative. But when we first started working on this, the methodology was conservative, but there wasn't enough out there to support the whole thing. There wasn't enough completed lease. They need, we needed something else to get the city up to that margin of safety. A couple of things that happened. One is the, is the agreement of the annexation of the publics at Clifftown. That's a, that's a big volume store that will produce, I think, very conservatively, more than $700,000 a year in sales taxes. The, in addition to adware taxes. So it's about $50,000 a year of impact to our forecast. That helps. BJ's also pub, this is, kind of puts, puts it over the top. So we now are, we're convinced now we have a margin of safety. We have signed leases, we have businesses that are open. I've just shared with us the actual taxes that are being collected already at Town Madison. Putting it all together, we determined that it, that the, the whole thing is ample to cover. Now, this is kind of the meat of this thing. And that's a lot of numbers, right? But that goes, this, this project spans a length of, we're using a timetable that starts now, goes through 2049, so about a 27-year timeframe. If you look in the first column, that is our estimate of the pledged taxes that are gonna come out of Town Madison. Very important, the pledged taxes, right? Because we have unplugged taxes out there, we'll get into that just in a few minutes. That's for schools, for debt retirement on the stadium out there and for the library. We've got, these are unplugged revenues that will, that are already flowing to the city. We're using a one and a half percent growth rate. Since I've been keeping up with what goes on in Madison, the city of Madison has never had a one and a half percent growth rate in any way. But this is, again, we've used a very conservative growth rate. But that service is what it is. The coverage is ample. It is, is, it covers, it covers itself there, right? Now, this is the, this is the good part. If this was gonna be done all with district bonds, this, this right here would be empty out to about 15 years. That would be an empty collar. There would be nothing flowing to the city, right? If this happens at even a modest one and a half percent annual growth rate, this is the excess pledged revenues that will flow to the city of Madison that the city of Madison can use for any lawful purpose. This is very important. This is a different figure than the unplugged revenues that are coming out of, out of, that never make it into this, but this comes straight to the city. But this would come straight to the city after, because of the way we've structured the debt, this would come and it will sit, it can sit on reserve and it can pile up. And I, you know, the, this is, this is the city of Madison's money. And if you notice, when you get out here to about 15 years down the road, there's more, there's more money than there is debt. So that's that magic day when this can just be completely paid off and 100% of this money comes to the city of Madison. And we're talking about, at that point in time, $10 million a year. I think well over $10 million a year because I think one and a half percent growth is a, is a, really a ludicrously conservative number to use. So the whole thing has a margin of safety. Before the bonds are structured, both two years interest, the first two years interest only, the district bonds will have what's called capitalized interest and a debt, and a reserve fund. So that's how your reserve fund starts over here in Madison's column. We start right there with nine million. The next year, 2024, there's no debt service to be paid, very little debt service to be paid. So you're coming out of the box before anything even really gets going. You've got 16 and a half million dollars on reserve, which is, which, that right there gives us what I would consider a very wide margin of safety in the, in the, in the transaction as a whole. Y'all stop me anytime you want to. But then this right here is an, is an estimate of all of the different taxes that are gonna come out of Town Madison, that are gonna go. If you look, the ones here, now there's a county piece too. Madison, everything is safe, but 95% of it is Madison and about 5% of it is Madison County. So they're, they're, they're a part of this too, so. There are some county adware taxes out there. These are the city adware taxes. As you, as you can see, the, the debt, the debt amount, the five and a half mils, the I-5 mil and 11 mils are dedicated to debt on the ballpark, I guess, library and the school system right there. The blue are not pledged to any of these Town Madison debts. So this is what's, this is what's pledged to the bonds and this is what comes out to the city of Madison. And a portion of this pledged part will come back to Madison soon because we don't need all of it. Cover that, we've got that margin of safety. So we've got these estimates here of, we've gone to individual merchants, businesses, so forth, to estimate adware taxes, sales tax, liquor tax, lodging tax, okay? Lodging taxes are not in there for a period of a while. But this is, we, we've gone and assessed every bit. And again, we'll point out from, from 23 down, we're only forecasting the one and a half percent annual growth rate in tax, in tax revenues and sales, which is, in my opinion, is, is overly conservative. But when you start fooling around with it and say, well, that's, what if we had 3% annual growth? What if we had 5% annual growth? These numbers get really hypopic. These are the tenants that are considered within this analysis. Each one of these tenants is either already open, under construction or under a signed lease and, and, and developing. So there's no, there's no high in the sky there. Y'all are gonna enjoy Saz's, they, that's owned by some buddies of mine in Montgomery. And that's, that's where we're at. This is where we evaluated the financing alternatives. Initially, the plan was to have one big district bond issue. That's, that, if we did that, the very first dollar that gets generated goes against those district bonds and the city doesn't get anything until the district bonds are paid off. Didn't feel like that was the best way to go. Spent a lot of time with Roger going through this, this plan. We, what we came up with is a good. We also feel like the I-565 interchange will be better managed as a city of Madison project than a developer managed project. And I think Algot and everybody else involved will be more comfortable with the city managing it. But the district bonds are gonna be non-rated, higher interest rate. City of Madison is AA+, one of the strongest credits in, in America. A lower interest rate. So that, so Madison doing a piece of this averages down the all-in cost of, cost of money. You're bearing in mind that Town Madison pays for all of this. So what we're doing is the city, or a portion of the city is throwing its credit rating on top of it. But the debts, the payments are gonna be made by Town Madison taxes. This won't be a budget item for the, for the city. The, let's see, we, we, we talked about low interest rates, low, you know, and this also enables those excess funds to immediately begin flowing to the city instead of waiting 10, 12, 15 years to get to them. This would be, this is how the debt is structured right now because the district bonds are the, the, the less highly regarded. These will be the non-rated bonds. We have them structured being, being paid for first. The city's bonds, if you see the city's bonds there, interest only for, for a few years. Come, come, come second, that's not, that's not an order of priority. That's a structural consideration to average the interest rate down. This is a, you know, we would expect that both series of bonds will have no more than 10 years of what we call call protection. It would not surprise me at all if we get 10 years out down the road and both of those bond issues are paid off. Wouldn't surprise me at all, given the history of growth occurs in Madison. The, we wanted to quantify the risk here. That's the, that's the number one priority. And what we see here is that the pledged taxes, which we think are overly conservative, the debts are, the combined debt service and the coverage, which is, is ample. The, the, we got, we got more pledged taxes than we do debt service. So the only thing that the city will have to budget will be, what are we gonna do with the extra money that's coming into the city of Madison? The city of Madison will have to budget for, what if this thing, what if this thing falls short? The, and, and once again, I say, you know, as we add, as the developer adds new tenants out there, new apartments, there are, I think they just went over 100 single-family homes in there. They've got, they've got another 100 or so to go. These things all add to that tax revenue that's coming in. And so we, we feel like that, and, and, you know, so in that next to last paper route, you know, that, that margin of safety is only gonna grow as, as more, as more businesses continue to look at it. Publics puts you on top, I think, between the, you know, the, the annexation of the publics gets you $700,000 in sales taxes alone, plus there'll be a significant amount of adware taxes out there. This is very important. This is your, this is the money that comes through immediately, so, in fact, it's already coming in. For schools, Town Madison will produce, let's just take fiscal 23, which we're in now. We think about when sales tax and property taxes, Town Madison alone will have almost, they'll be almost $2 million in revenue for some of the public schools. And again, we've got a one and a half percent inflation back on it too. Who knows where that'll go? That's, that's very important. And this, this revenue here is not tied to either bond issue. This is just, this is just, this is coming in now. This is not and will not be tied to either bond issue. This is a very brief summary of the funding agreement, which I can take through my next day at law school and do my very first. So I don't know if y'all can hear Preston. The, the general gist of this is the city is already obligated to the developer under a funding agreement in 2018. So what this is gonna do is replace that. Okay? And then the terms of this funding agreement should stay the same between now and the time they do what's now called the, the developer bond that will, that will become a capital market bond that they'll do probably in January, thereabouts. But the terms will be the same so that if they, if they never did, if they never did the district bonds, then, well, you just, they, they, you, this, this structure's in place. So instead of, instead of Town Madison district paying, you know, Franklin funds and, and, you know, Mass Mutual or whoever you buy the capital market bond, pay the developer. And they can get his money back over 15 years instead of, instead of right now. So I think they are incentivized to wanna, to wanna do this. But if they don't, the way we've got, Preston has this structure, is that will it, if they don't, then, so. I think that's the, the best thing to do. Without getting into any, I think Preston would be better to answer your questions about the details of the funding. And that's, that's, that's all I have. If anybody's got questions, I'd be happy to give it a shot.
Maybe this will help. Real quick, can I restate this and then tell me if I'm understanding it correctly? First of all, this will not add any more expenses to the city's budget.
That's correct.
Okay.
Now, let me, let me say, the, I'm, I'm, I'm not a lawyer, I'm not CPA. The, the, the cost of, the cost of, 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 the, the bonds that the city issues in your, in your audit report is gonna say, we have this bond, we have these bonds. But it's also gonna say, we have these sales taxes, adware taxes and whatnot to pay for it. And the amount of those taxes exceeds, so it's not gonna be a budget. I think it would be, from a budget standpoint, this will be a plus and not a negative.
Right.
The city also agrees in this to pay the cost of getting the district audited, having, having an audit done on the district and also paying the trustee bank on this because the city wants to be sure that there's, A, there's an audit done and, and B, that the trustee gets paid, so the trustee does what it's supposed to do. Those are very small amounts and those will also be paid for on the government.
Right. Because these taxes are already pledged for that infrastructure.
Correct.
So this is already, I mean, it's a wash as far as the budget is concerned. This is not gonna increase.
It should be better than a wash. It should be, it should be newer to the, to the city.
Okay. As far as expenses? Then this new agreement totally replaces the previous agreement. It goes away when you have only this agreement.
Correct.
Okay. And in 15 years, what we have in our reserve balance will exceed what the, the remaining debt is or need or exceed what's.
If, if you assume that Town Madison is, has businesses out there, which I think is, we, we've gotta make that legal play. There's gonna be, it might not be, it might not be the, the yard milkshake shop. It might be XYZ ice cream shop, but there's gonna be somebody in there. You know, Town Madison will be there. And if they achieve one and a half percent growth in sales and values out there, then yes, this whole thing could be gone well before 15 years. And in which case, 100% of the, of the revenues flow to the city of Madison, which would be these, these numbers in this column right here. So we get out to, to 15 years out here where you've got nine, if you have one, one and a half percent growth, then you have $9 million a year coming into the city of Madison and nowhere to go except for whoever's on the council end to decide how to spend it. But it's, but, but that's the, that is the, that's, that would be the plan. It should not be, as long as you, I can't, you can't predict the future with certainty. But if you assume that you're gonna have some growth and that there will be commercial activity in Town Madison, then that's not.
Thank you. What interest rates may be this, this, this?
We used, we used 6% on the district bonds and 5% on the city's bonds. And we think the city's bonds would be in the fours. Right now, it's a big conservative, we use, we use five.
Can you talk a little bit about our debt limit and how absorbing this kind of debt on a GO warrant, how that impacts and how it's different when you're best staying in here?
It's a good question. I left that out, man, I'm sorry. Cities in Alabama have a statutory debt limit. The debt limit established by law for general obligation debt. It says your debt cannot exceed 20% of the assessed valuation of all real and personal property lying within that city. But there's an exception. We have a constitutional amendment that is currently called Amendment 772 that will be modified by, there's a constitutional amendment permitting the amendment on the ballot in November, this coming election day, that's gonna modify that law that enables the city to go up to 50% of its general obligation debt for projects that are to benefit economic and commercial development. This certainly does. The, the flyovers here certainly do the, the commercial and economic development in a quarter way. The, the city won't run a file, this, this won't. The size of this, it's $37 million-ish and it's covered by the sales, sales and adware and liquor taxes coming out of Town Madison. It's not gonna give, the, the rating agencies are gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna just say, yeah, that's right. It's not gonna give, the, the rating agencies are gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna just say, yeah, that's right. They won't, they won't make a flip. And this will not run you afoul of any debt limits, that you have, uh, you have maybe a couple of hundred million dollars in margin under, under Amendment seven seventy-two to do something like this. This is not gonna, this is not gonna impede the city's ability to borrow any other thing that might come along.
So, you're saying that the fifty percent of the rates that, that doesn't function?
Excuse me?
Fifty percent is not a common rate, or rate is uncalled for?
If, if, if the twenty percent limit applied to this, the city might, might consider, you know, that, that, that this might get you a little close to your twenty percent. City Madison is double A plus credit, the, the rating, this, this is an Alabama statute. Uh, most cities in Alabama are broke, uh, they're tight, they're not as affluent as Madison, they don't have, uh, the management that Ma- Madison does, they don't have the tax base that Madison has. So, the legislature has arbitrarily stated that cities in Alabama have a, have a borrowing limit of twenty percent of their assessed valuation. Well, that's like, that, that's, that's just putting a blanket over every ci- you know, the city of, the city of Madison is not the city of enterprise. Enterprise would probably do well to limit their borrowing to ten percent of their assessed valuation. But for the city of Madison to have debt all the way up to fifty percent of its assessed valuation, the city of Madison could comfortably handle it. And this wouldn't, this would not impact the rating, particularly because you've got a source of repayment in this case. So, the rating agencies look at this and go, well, yeah, it's debt, that is debt. But there's an, an identified pledged source of repayment for it. So, the amount of debt is not, is not gonna give anybody any more, anybody in the market or any rating agency any kind of.
So, there, 'cause I get this question a lot, so we are going to have money to have, I want to put in this, I apologize, I love everything else in the city.
You'll have more. You'll have, you'll have more because of the, there's a positive cash flow from the way this is being structured. And this is sales tax, you get to tax the people from the cabinet, from over here in Charlotte.
Um, you said that as, as we stand now, this is all that's coming in, but as we do the flyovers, we will gain more commercial development?
Yes.
And, okay, people are saying, okay, where and how much, how much commercial in the user? What are we truly going to gain by spending this thirty-seven million bucks?
Well, we're not, we're not urban, we're not urban planners, um, that, because our, our, our task at hand was, can, is this, is this good for Madison? And the answer to that, in our opinion, is, is definitely yes. Uh, to project what sort of development this will spur, uh, it will spur development. Anytime you, you reduce choke points and decrease travel time, uh, increase safety, uh, fewer, make it easier to get in, other things, commercial activity follows. People like to have a business somewhere that's easy to get in and out of. But I'm not, we're not urban planners, so I can't, you know, all I, my, my mission says, what's on the ground right now, it pays for this. Now, a reasonable person will assume that what's built, it makes not only Town Madison, but everything in the vicinity of out there that's not even in Town Madison, but from this. From, from, just from the access, from the ease of ingress and egress. It's a, it's a, uh, people don't want traffic, but we're not, but we, you know, we're, our, our whole mission and our whole analysis has been to assume that we do this and nobody else comes. And if we do this and nobody else comes, it's, it's still gonna be. But I think you do this, lots of people do.
Does anybody have some thought about, maybe there's some financial news out there? I keep getting asked to, does anybody know?
I mean, um, I sent that to you, I asked that about a year ago, I think.
Yeah, no one's ever answered.
I sent it to Megan, um, but I don't think she, I would think, she was waiting to transmit it, and so, you know, we were here, and, um, so, I, I can find it, I was looking, but I can find emails I sent to her, I just don't recall the number. I mean, I could have in my office and look it up, but I just don't recall the problem here. But I didn't do that math and send that to her, but.
Okay, well, if you, did you have, is it, I answer a few of your question a lot, what do you gain by adding? What did you spend, what is that, you know, if we're already getting this much right now?
Well, my question, that's a policy question.
Bring it down. Can you make sure that all of us get a copy?
Yes, of course, thank you.
I've got Commissioner Haraway here also in the county. Steve, you guys have your comments from, from the county side?
Well, from our point-
This is Beaver Corn.
From our standpoint, I'm glad that you guys have taken the time to go through this and do it and look at it and evaluate it. I've had the, first of all, sitting in one of the meetings and heard us all the numbers, and I'm glad you guys have got Mr. Rice involved doing the analysis to look and see that this is gonna be able to generate revenue for the city. And that was my concern, that you guys are gonna go in here, turn this, take this over, and the city's not gonna be anything out of it. All you're gonna do is get the debt level. And from the looks and the numbers, you guys are gonna be in a situation where you're gonna generate revenue back to the city, that you can make it better work for the residents, and then seeing the numbers that the school systems are picking up out of this, I mean, that's, that's very impressive. They're gonna, I think you said two million dollars is what the schools are getting at this time? And that, that's good to see, that number is beginning to grow. So, uh, from our standpoint, we're excited that you guys are looking at this, taking the time to do your diligence and look, and determine if this is what I think to do for the city. And I feel I, at this point, you guys are in a good shape to do that. And from our standpoint, I've talked to the chairman about it, and we're committed to, for the county to, you know, to stay where we're at in this process, uh, the savings that we deal with for annual tax. We're good to try to stay there where we're at, and, you know, with small opportunities, what we already got ninety-five, we're on five percent of the county's going to work if you guys do what we can. Anything else, you know, I'll be glad to do what I can to help out as well, if I need to be a part of any of the meetings, or, you know, whether you'd be involved or do what we can to try to get you guys the rest possible really again, and get towards, you got some revenue, you come in and start doing some projects with it, and not just pick and pick and choose.
Thank you, Steve. I do have one question, I see Martin making a job here. I guess, I thought that was kinda, kinda, we didn't know how much it was, so this isn't, you know, how you're bringing Martin, you know? Is that what I'm reading here? I don't know.
I can't get the question, what's the question?
Margaritaville, it's supposed to-
I don't think it should be on the list. Yeah, just don't think, I don't think that should be there.
Oh, yeah, that's, uh, that's been on and off and on and off so many times, I need to check that off.
You did check that.
Yeah. It's, let, let me say this, there are no Margaritaville numbers in the analysis. That's just a list.
It should just say hotel, because it will be a hotel, or, I just don't think we can say Margaritaville, it's good that you don't have the numbers in there.
I did not include Margaritaville.
I've got one other question for Mr. Rice, just gonna follow him. Right now, there's a, a little bit of uncertainty, um, in the markets. There's, um, if we were to go on this timeframe that's suggested, and, and agreement were approved in the bid on the lot, which were accepted in November, what, what does that look like in terms of the timing of you entering the market for the GO warrants in terms of your deed? Is there any reason you would hold, would you go, would you go as soon as you could?
Well, this is, I mean, you ask good questions, and this is, good. Best time to be taking this to the market would have been about March fifteenth of this year, about, about seven months ago. Uh, we've lost a lot of ground. Now, um, you hear, now, uh, we got some more inflationary numbers. To me, this is like, this is like the old question of when's the best time to plant a tree? Best time to plant a tree is thirty years ago, the second best time to plant a tree is today. So, I wouldn't, uh, I would, you know, we would hope that at some point in time, we'd get some relief in interest rates, but I believe that can't, that can't be predicted. So, you know, this works in the market today. Uh, there will be opportunities down the road, depending on, uh, you know, how we can ultimately structure this, that, you know, if we get a lot lower interest rates, this could be refinanced, and there's some of that, the lower rate. And, and, but the, what the, a refinancing would do is, you, it would just, in this case, you think that would differ, but when the city refinances the city's bonds, it saves money, uh, freeing up money that can be used for other purposes. You refinance something like this, it's just gonna create more excess money that will squirt out of Town Madison that can be used by the city for any other purpose. So, that's, uh, but I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, uh, you know, it would be a good risk.
Is there historically a, a better time after the midterm elections to give a little bit of time to kind of stabilize, or not necessarily?
I don't think so. I think the markets are, I think the market right now has a, Johnny, you make, the markets are kind of priced in, the markets are pricing in another three quarters of a percent, uh, rate hike by Federal Reserve in November. Uh, that's kind of in, in, in your rates now. Uh, we wouldn't be selling bonds before the Fed needs. So, if the Fed were to come and do something other than that, like if the, if the Fed came out and said, we're, we're only gonna hike rates a half a point this time, then that might create a, a sharp drop in interest rates, and we might, that, that'd be, we'd be hustling to get into the market. Uh, the other thing that we've gotta do is you, you start to, the calendar we have right now has us sort of being in the market the first week of December and closing mid-December. Because if you, you've got Thanksgiving in there, then about the middle of December, you start losing people's attention. Uh, so usually, the first, first week of December is a good time to be in the market. But that's, you know, that gets into the other part of our, of our engagement for the city, is that if, uh, if it's a bad market and we get, we're ready to go, we don't have to go like that. We might say, let's sit on it. Wait like the first of the year, let's wait and see how, uh, elections will be over by the time we do this. So, we'll know what the, you know, if, if there's gonna be a political impact on rates. But, but we'll have, uh, I think, but, but it just goes to, right now, we don't really see anything major happening in, in, in the rate market in the next month or two. So, it'll probably be, that's, we're, we're covering fine, we have a great market, so, uh, we're covering that service really well. You know, I, I've, I've been doing this for, I'm not as old as the deal, so, I've been doing this for thirty-eight years. And it's, uh, you know, I, I, I remember when we were happy to do the municipal bond issues in single digits. That was, thought that was really great, and wow, we just did that bond deal for the city of X, Y, Z at eight percent. So, we're, we're not-
Those were bad times.
Well, right, and, and so, if we, in the grand scheme of things, if we went out and did this, it's four, a half, and five percent of us, you're gonna say, well, that's, you know, let's do it, and if we kick ourselves next, next March, and they say, well, it's down to four and a quarter, we, we still there to do.
So, the district bonds, uh, if we were to go forward, there's two different things, capitalized interest and debt service reserve fund.
Correct.
Capitalized interest is just to give us another year of interest.
Here's the way that works, and this is really, really, Roger, Roger, on this, right? Okay. Capitalized interest, right, BJ's is not open yet. Okay, BJ's will open in sometime, and the latest word is, I don't remember, where they say, late twenty-three, first quarter twenty-four. We don't have any BJ's money in our analysis for fiscal twenty-three, we have them coming on board twenty-four. Right? Uh, Stiefel's underwriters, when they go into the market, they're, they're gonna, they wanna have, you know, their coverage. Well, they got plenty of coverage when BJ's opens, okay? BJ's not open yet, so they're gonna say, well, what, who's gonna pay the interest until BJ's opens? So, they'll put an, an amount of money into the bonds called capitalized interest, they're gonna put a year's worth of interest into the deal. And they're also gonna demand that you have a debt service reserve fund in there. Well, here's what it is, capitalized interest, right? See that number right there? Three million eight forty-eight right there, that excess plus revenues. That first year, they don't have to pay any debt services, covered by the capitalized interest fund. So, all those, all these taxes, except the interest on the city's bonds, goes right to the city. So, the city, the city gonna get that money, the city get that money right now. Uh, the debt service reserve fund is in there. That goes in, that'll, that'll make the last payment on those bonds. That's the city's money. It's the only, that's the only party it can benefit. So, the, the fact that we have a requirement for capitalized interest creates a little, we get to jumpstart our, our, uh, you know, what I call, we, we get to, Roger gets to start right holding money, we kind of get to jumpstart it, so they're very conservatively, that'll be sixteen and a half million dollars sitting there about fiscal twenty-five. Which that, that'll, that gives you a big margin of safety.
So, the second question is, two different interest rates, so,
Right.
I've, I've never even acted as if I'm a lawyer, so I'm not asking that kind of question to get some information out of here.
These bonds right here, Mayor, the district bonds, non-rate.
So, my question is, why wouldn't we as a city take over both these bonds immediately?
You know, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be, it would be worth some, and it would be something that the city can come back out of with if things fall apart, we've got that ability. Uh, this is, it would also be a lot less debt.
So, the other question is, going back to, if, uh, Commissioner Haraway, you know, coming from the county standpoint, right now, the county is, um, I don't know what the word would be, with property taxes and loan taxes supporting that, this, this project. Um, if they were to not continue, if we take over both of them, there's no district anymore than the, the city, what's, what's the cost of the city losing their support if they were not to support this building? So, you got, so, right now, Steve, what's the, if the county voted not to support this project, because we're gonna have to re-vote on it at some point, at least if it got voted down, so we're not gonna lose support, what percentage of our number would come out of it?
Uh, it's, it's, it's a piece of it, it's, let me go find, uh, there's a slide, it's right there. It's right there, it's on that part there. So, it's, uh, you know, it's, in the first year, you know, say fiscal twenty-three, about seven hundred thousand dollars, and then it starts doubling up, I've got it by one minute. So, it would, it would mean that they wouldn't be able to, they'd be, uh, they'd be down to pretty close. So, that's a, you know, certainly now, the, the flip side of that, Mayor, is that, is that if you started talking about, you know, you start talking about thirty-five, thirty-seven million, GO order, Amendment seven seventy-two, whatever it is, not gonna raise any eyebrows, you start doubling that, uh, Mike, you know, that's a big, I don't wanna take a look at the hood, hoodies, but it would, uh, it could be an ace up your sleeve, but it-
So, Steve, do you have any idea, one way or the other, what you guys would do? I mean, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I think it does make a big difference. You know, one of the things that to me is critical for this, is if we're gonna take it over, let's take it over. Right now, we're kind of still having the district evolve from that, which wasn't something that made anybody very excited. Right now, we're kind of still having the district evolve from that, which wasn't something that made anybody very excited. Um, you know, so I think in this case, if the city's gonna do it, I'd like to understand what it costs us if we were to do it, or what would we have to work with, with our partners, to make sure that we don't have to pay this, that this is still a part of it. But I'm just trying, I'm just trying to find the balance of that, you know, the one bond issuance that we do versus splitting this up and having two different costs, two different bonds.
So, you know, I, I would say something, uh, there's no, uh, the only reason that, that would not work would be if, uh, somebody felt like the, the size of the city's G O was too large.
With the numbers you have here, we'll see what that adds up.
You know, we, we, we'd, uh, cover it very comfortably.
I think in, in some part of discussions with Roger, he has expressed some concerns of carrying that much debt on the city's books because this plan splits it.
Right.
And so now, how that debt is going on, walk the district's, and all the others are ready.
And now, you're right, that's, that would be Roger's concern, you know, Roger, Roger felt like, you know, it was, it was very much well within the city's uh, purview mission and ought to do a, a road project, a highway project, pretty much, you know, uh, whereas, you know, out there in the streets, sidewalks, lights, and, you know, it'll be, it'll be, it'll be district, right?
A couple of things, one, the thing is, we're looking as a city, you know, to take the excess and bank it, so we in turn can pay it off as quickly as we can and have that number on, I guess it's the far left, all of it. So, yeah, that's our whole goal, is not to just take two, three million dollars a year, just put it in the river fund, we're gonna get it paid off as quickly as we can. But if we match the two of these together, does it, I mean, if we take out the full funding of the city, not just the Walker District, doesn't that improve our interest rate, which means we'll pay less?
It would, it would, uh, lower it, uh, some, like we're using six for layers and using five for years.
Yeah.
So that's a point.
At the point, that's a big difference if you take that out.
Four hundred thousand dollars a year.
And it's half of what the county right now is putting in there. And that's a lot of reason we weren't gonna look to do it, if you work with them on supporting that even doing that percent rate instead of a five percent or, you know, something along the line. I just feel like, while the numbers are great, if we're gonna do it, let's do it where we have it. And don't have to worry about Walker District being able to.
I'd wanna have a, I'd wanna have a conversation with the lady agencies before, before you give a.
I would love that.
Strong opinion.
Steve, do you want to pay the commission, when we pull that district, is that illegal to you or is that just voting issue? If we pull a district, and there's not a district area, you know, if we pull that, go off?
Oh, you said you pull it, if we pay the district off, basically, when we take out the bond, we're gonna assess, the, the, the district is no longer per se needed, but we still need projects supported at the level that you guys have looked to do it. I guess that's the question, is, again, you can't speak for them, we're just trying to make the best possible decision if we could.
I think if, if there was excess revenue coming in, and you taking all of our revenue and paying all of that service, and you guys are taking some of the excess revenue and you then doing other things, and we won't get any of it, that might be a concern, but if we were able to take a little bit of the revenue like you guys work, based on our percentage, then I think it would be fine.
What's the time limit on the bid that we have?
November thirtieth.
Oh, okay, so we have a little bit of a question, that changes. And we can even have special meaning if we need it to.
After November thirtieth, uh, the steel price will only hold there for, uh, November thirtieth. So they, they would, um, again, as another miller, we continue to have conversations with, but they don't know what that eligibility would be after the thirtieth.
That's the biggest.
So that's November, that's November the thirtieth, that's not the end of this one?
No, November thirtieth, that, that's on this timeline, it's crucial, and that's, and all these.
I guess another question, Johnny, this may be for you, right now, they're looking to do two different bond issuances. If we combine them into, in essence, one bond issuance, is there a big, a, a, a savings? A major savings or is it a minor savings on, on a eighty thousand, eighty million dollar bond?
I, I can't answer that so right precisely, but it would be a difference, I would say, mine would be.
Okay.
But it would, it would be, yeah, I think it'd be, well, you wouldn't have a, if you do it as a G O, you don't have to capitalize it. You don't have to have a reserve fund. So those two items make your issue. Although it's the city's money, as I pointed out, it's gonna be, it's gonna go to the benefit of the city. Uh, it would reduce the size, so you would reduce the size of the borrowing, thereby the size of the, the underwriting, the amount of the interest. And, uh, so that would be a, and that would ought to be a plus, I would like to, uh, I like to, to reemphasize that we, uh, we would like to get this, we would like to assess the rating impact that would have, if, if, before we advise on that. I would have no, I would have no problem with it at all whatsoever. Uh, but I would like to assess the rating impact.
Well, capitalized interest makes good sense, that's what we did with the targeting, you know, when we did the target bonds, you know, they, they were, um, they paid off a ten-year, so we did twelve years to get it to two years to build the job, considering they had the revenue to pay for it, so that makes sense, we may need to do that, but if the debt service is simply being kept in there, that's, that's five million dollars, you know, that you're not, immediately, that you're not gonna be paying interest on.
Mayor, that's a fair question, we can talk about that.
Okay.
Because the rating fees would be the same rate I pay in a forty-seven, I would say, nine percent. But it would be more of a legal, I make reference, to have a business, business foundation. Yeah, you're gonna have, uh, you know, we'll get into, uh, you'll probably have a, I imagine that, that they have a pretty big bill run up at Manor Ticker over the years. Yeah, if you look, um, that number right there, that right there?
Yeah.
They've been running, you know, they've been running a big pot now for a while, and, yeah, so you'd have some bubbles and.
Well, I understand that's another, we're gonna, we're gonna pay that, we're gonna pay one way or the other, right?
You wouldn't have that, you wouldn't have that.
You could still have capitalized interest, couldn't you?
Uh, good, true.
I mean, if you go back to, if you're putting both together, you've gotta make sure that there's enough revenue, you know, to at least get close.
Well, you've got enough revenue, Steve, you've got enough revenue to pay, if you do, I've got your, I've got the city site set up, it's two years interest only as well.
Okay.
Okay, so if you look, okay, um, okay, so the city, actually, the city is, is not, is interest, no interest through, you know, for fifteen years, so we're trying to get this out, trying to get this side out of here quick. But you, you could do, you know, we have this one set up as two years interest only, you could do that, the interest is nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand, uh, in twenty-three, and it would max at a year of interest on that, so you're gonna say, that'd be about three million in interest for a couple of years, and you're gonna have well over that coming in. You could still capitalize the interest until BJ's opens if you want to, but I think you got enough coming in right now, already, out of this company.
Just a question. Um, if the market does come and say, look, what is the highest interest rate that would be in the capital, still be with the companies?
That is a, uh, that is a measurable number, but I don't have, I haven't known that exactly.
I do, he just doesn't know, if he's just kind of long in New York, I thought it was a recent change, so I'm just hoping, what number, if we can get that, not.
Well, you know, if you, if you're particularly, if you're talking about, you know, now, you're doing, you say doing the whole thing as a, as a general obligation, and I say that, I really wanna have that conversation with the lady agency to make sure that doesn't have any long-term impact on the city in Madison. I've had conversations about, about, you know, thirty-seven million dollar piece, but I haven't had a, a conversation about seven million dollar piece, so I wanna have that conversation. The, uh, you know, it works fine with the, uh, with this piece over here at six percent. Actually, about six thirty, once you put the impact of fees, which would be less, uh, you know, so it works at least up to that. And I don't see anything happening in the near term, but we'd get double A plus, uh, rates to six and a half percent, that would be something.
From a, a double question standpoint, we're basically talking eighty-five million. Add this, add an aggregate, I'll say aggregate, but a five and six percent over this period.
Five million, five million.
Right, but I mean, what we're showing here is two separate bonds, one at five, one at six, total of roughly eighty-five. And we're talking about a total maybe of, I don't know, somewhere eighty-one, eighty-two million because of the less fees in, in essence, and a lower interest rate, and we're asking, what's the difference in interest over time, and what would impact?
Disregard.
Yeah, probably somewhere around about ten, eleven million.
It's, it's, it would be a big number, but I, but I, again, wanna emphasize, the, the load, this, this, this load we're going down, it's a big temper.
Sure.
With a, a, a very detailed conversation with Moody's and S and P. But we're not gonna, there's no reason, this project supports the, the, as structured, the, the town lots and projects supports the whole thing. And if we, I, I would say, yeah, there would be some, some savings to do, the whole thing is a G O, but you don't, I would say, a double A plus is never a big plus.
One hundred percent, I think, it's something, they have our best options forward.
Paul, is that, is that in essence what you were asking, a hundred percent?
And there would be time to have both of those figures for comparison before we had to make the decision in by November thirtieth, right?
Yeah, we gotta have this number quick, you know, same twenty-three, all that, you know, foot fourteen.
Foot fourteen, be able to have those comparisons by November fourteen, that mean, I mean, that's, I mean, two or three weeks, right?
I think the time would be off because the timeline here, and just, I'd say, first, for any money.
Okay, I see, so, I mean, you can't really adjust that.
It's been ruled on fourteen, it's been ruled.
If we're talking back, say, or eleven million dollars.
I mean, I heard, yeah, according to you, yeah, the discussion, the, the, uh, well, you know, they're, they're, uh, they're, they're people that are, I, I can't, I can't call your analysts at Moody's and say, hey, what, what are, let me paint this, this is gonna take a couple of weeks, this is gonna, this is gonna take a while. This is gonna take, uh, probably, um, yeah, this would, this would, this would take, this, this, this would be looked at real hard.
We are, I'm gonna agree with the, the either or.
Preston, still on?
Hey, Preston.
I'm on, I'm here. Good, you're right, you're right.
So I just, let me ask you another question. If we wanna have a funding agreement as is, you know, you said that if the interest rates went down, we could recommit, would it be possible to recommit and pay off the district bonds? And then have one bond? If we needed to keep this timeline?
The, the district bonds are gonna have some competition on them too. Uh, they could be, you know, probably, the shortest we can compress it would probably be eight years. Really need Congress to, to give us back taxes into advance fund, which gets us a half million of millions, but. So, you know, twenty seventeen, tax act took away one of our greatest, uh, mechanisms to eliminate debt, maybe at least. So, so we, we'd be, you know, we'd probably stuck to something for eight years.
Preston, is there something we could add, add in, in funding agreement that, if, the, that, either or, that if we can do a G O bond for all of it, we would go down that aisle if we could, we would do it separate?
Be, before the district bonds are issued, you would do that?
Correct.
Uh, yes, can. It, it would have to think through what all the impacts would be, but, but that's doable.
I think legally, something to read, maybe on one day it would, that is, uh, it makes sense, that it gives us an opportunity to do it, and if not.
Do a first round, do a funding agreement?
Well, yeah, well, I mean, that one, I'm gonna agree with you, so you, you can fund either way, you can either do a G O, all of it, or a G O for half, and then a, or a bond for other.
Either, either you do the G O and pay off the existing district debt straight up, or you enter a funding agreement to pay off the district, new district debt, which in turn pays off existing debt.
We're twenty-four days away from November fourteenth, so that seems to be like it would be enough time to have those two separate figures, twenty-four days? I mean, that doesn't seem like reasonable.
Creating obviously more work for them to put it either or, but if it can't be done that way, then that gives us some flexibility and these guys some time to stay in.
Hey, hey, Preston, can you hear me?
In, yes.
Okay. Let's see, Preston, let's, the, the, um, if this could, if the funding agreement, agreement could be amended so that the city can fulfill and by, 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 by the simple payment of money, make the district go away. So that we could do this, we could do this swap of, you know, the developer gets his, his, uh, what we've been calling the twenty-two, the twenty-twenty-two bond. And then, that would, they would, we could then have a purchase option on that twenty-twenty-two bond?
Well, I think, I think what you would do, but the twenty-twenty-two A bond, or the, the sub-T bond, is wanting to, is wanting to be repayable at any time anyway.
Right.
So I think you could build in a provision that says that the city would have the option at any time prior to the issuance of the district's capital markets bond, the twenty-three bond.
Right.
To redeem and prepay the twenty-two A bond, and essentially that's when the district goes away. So I, I think it's, it certainly is a complication, but I think it's, on a legal and graphic standpoint, it's doable.
I think it's doable within our timeframe.
We need to talk to the county and get their agreement on that piece of it, as we go through this, too.
It's a piece that we can take care of, and Steve, and Steve's not on the spot, that's just something, as we're trying to, you know, they've been a great partner in helping us accomplish this, and it's really just always trying to figure out the best way to go forward, to minimize what the city has, and have the most control. I mean, I think that's the one thing that we all started in, in looking to do this is, when, and part of the answer to Karen's question is, if we don't do this, there's no guarantee that the flood will be built at least anytime soon, and that does not help the city. It is not in our best interest, it's not in the best interest of walkers, it's not in the best interest of our city, there's so much that can still and will come there if they're built. But us having the full control for all of that is a, is a positive thing we're all working towards. So, so that's one of the reasons it's been important that, and can that be done? So, so that's one of the reasons it's been important that, and can that be done, and if can, and it saves us money, then you can bring that to the county commission and say, here's why we'd like the partnership, and listen to them as far as what they would like to see, and partner with us, continue to partner with us, that's been doubted with us.
I think even with partnering with the county, this can still be open.
Oh, yeah, it already is.
You know, I mean, well, even if we go with the G O, all G O bond, and the district goes away, we can make it so that it's more cooperative counties.
Rush, I think I heard you address this, but I assume part of that conversation would have to do with the rating agencies and making sure we're not stepping in from the best standpoint.
Exactly, what I want, what I, what I would wanna do is, is first, you know, is talk, I wanna go into, I wanna go into this process with the rating agencies, with Roger and me holding hands and, and talking to them together. I don't wanna get, I don't wanna get out there with them and start negotiating on behalf of the city of Madison. Conceptually, um, I would, um, you know, I think my first, first conversation, be with Roger to tell him what I'm doing, and then, and then make contact with your analysts and set up some, uh, some Zoom calls to lay this out for them. We, we can, we can get them satisfied, see, here's the, here's the thing you run into with rating agencies, right? We know that Madison, Alabama is a very affluent, very fortunate community, uh, it is well-managed, and it is a, Madison should be a triple A credit. The reason Madison's not a triple A credit is Madison is in Alabama. And there is a, there is a predisposed bias against us country folks down here. So, the, the, making the case that we go and show that we're gonna do a, a long-term bond issue in support of a, of a, uh, big shopping center, big fine shopping center, big fine, nice, beautiful, upscale shopping center. They're not gonna have that mental picture in their heads.
They're like Kmart.
They, they think we're gonna have a Kmart, and they think there might be a barbecue joint out there, and they may or may not have the streets, but and it's, uh, and it's, it's something I've thought my, my entire career. So, having said that, it might, you know, we, we gotta then sell them that that's gonna be viable not fifteen years from now, thirty years from now. And it's, uh, it's, it's gonna, I just, we're gonna, we'll, we'll have a go, we'll have a go at it, we'll be, we'll be your advocate. But I'm just saying, this is not a slam dunk, so. I'm gonna get anybody, this would be a great way, a great way to do it, I don't wanna get anybody's hopes up, I know these guys can sell bonds. We, you know, we can, we can certainly move to try to, and it's gonna be hard to get anybody to give us a fast answer. They also won't give you an answer, they will do a full review of these bonds that you do, and then they're gonna put a rating on them. They're not gonna tell you in advance what our rating's gonna be, they can signal, uh, what that is, but they're not gonna tell you in advance. Now, they will say, you know, Madison, Madison has, has some debt, Madison has some debt because it supports the finest public school system in Alabama, if not southeast. They don't believe that, they all went to, they all went to fancy private schools that are connected. So, uh, they don't care, they're, they're, uh, if we can, if we can pull it off, Johnny and these guys can do it, uh, there will be some fees that, that you'll have, some, some of these guys that work on the, with the developers, for years and years, are gonna squeal like pigs during their day. So be prepared to have some of those folks, uh, up in your ear. Everything they tell you may not be, that's, um.
That's why we have you.
They call me, Teflon Man. But the, uh, yeah, that's, that's the, uh, yeah, if, if you, if you wanted to do it that way, because all of this debt is going, is being paid back from the same stream of cash flow. So it makes sense, like John said, that we'll just pay it back the lowest possible interest. Now, if we can do that without gumming up our ratings, no reason not to. But I'm not gonna make any promises.
In fact, if we're gonna up our ratings, would be a higher interest rate.
And everything tomorrow going forward. And it's also, you know, those ratings, that's a, that's a letter grade on, on what the pork, what, what municipal government's, their municipal pork laws. Cause they're not just looking at dollar, you know, they're looking at dollars, but they're, they're, they're quantifying not just your elected leadership, they're, they're quantifying your, your management, staff, and legal and finance. They're putting, they're literally putting a letter grade on, um, on things like that. So you don't wanna, you don't wanna mess up your pork law. My partner Chris is, is, he's got all that, he's, he's got great relationships with you and analysts. He's closer to their age, they're all very young and very smart and old.
Well, if we're getting out of here, can I double back and ask my question? Can we still do C P I's if we go like this large A, A modeling and running, unless you allow the more?
C P I.
The, uh, pharmacokinetic improvements, will there be money left over?
Oh, the, the, the numbers will be similar to what we showed, this, actually a little, a little better. Yeah, you'll have, you'll have money split now to do capital improvements.
So it will still be there, even if you do a big lump sum, as opposed to just the one in a minute?
Most municipalities don't even consider, uh, they, they wouldn't even be, they wouldn't even be considered to do any part of this as a general obligation, if they don't have the, 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 uh, Madison citizens.
Any other final questions for Mr. Rush?
No more questions, I'm kind of construction, that's it.
We're gonna move on to the, to the conclusion side of that, our agreement, where you're doing good again.
Given the comment, uh, of the agreement would be that there was a acceptance of bid, we have, the, the city makes key, the acceptance of the bid, the lowest possible bidder on, uh, November fourteenth, at the stands, we had a three vendors, and the lowest of those was a figure of thirty-six million, seven eighty. And, uh, we do currently have stipulation to extend that deadline for us to accept that bid. Uh, my calculation of that is actually November twenty-eighth, just a couple of days off from what President mentioned previously. And November twenty-eighth would basically be the deadline to be accepted it. We have not accepted anything as yet, there's an extension, and then we would have to, the city would have to make determination as to who's the lowest responsible bidder by that date, November twenty.
Just out of curiosity, Brian, what were the other bids?
Sure, uh, what we had was, uh, one bid from, uh, DeMent Construction, that was thirty-nine million, uh, four sixteen, change. Uh, we had Scott Bridge, uh, they bid thirty-nine million, uh, one ninety-six. So there was roughly two and a half million dollar difference between the lowest and the second.
Were they, uh, are they done?
Uh, these are all, uh, responsible, uh, vendors, uh, as far as the breakdown, it's not hard to really differentiate as far as how bids came in line by line, about the line by line analysis, but the bottom line was, it's basically the same as on with, uh, just a difference as far as estimates of labor, et cetera. So it's hard to break it down, it's really hard to prepare it without looking line by line. But ultimately, they, they all were, basically, couldn't have given the same, same profit.
Okay, but, I mean, if you want, we are looking in, it's not a question of cause in it, that they will, that any over just will have to pay into?
Well, I think they will be subject of like any acceptance of bids and changelors, uh, in fact, there is cities where change market steel prices and, and play, et cetera. Uh, so it's definitely unfortunate moving target as we continue to lay and push forward, uh, the date that they actually start on this. Now, I'm sure that the stipulation we have, uh, includes trying to lock into those prices, they can't guarantee that for the long term. But there can be changes in some of those, the long ones push out, and I'll let that stay in the community.
Is that gonna change much?
Well, no, I, I mean, as far as the changelors, I mean, we can anticipate what those might also be, but, uh, there, there could very well, we talked about giving something up three months or after the first bid, uh, we would have just made a buy and need some change order, but I don't believe that it would be. Again, I, I don't know, as far as set up, I'm, I shouldn't change the math for a while.
Are there any caps? Are there any caps in the, in the spending, uh, on the, often, based on?
No, when we sign this bid, it's like, man, and that change order only because it's a change, everybody bid hard playing, so I think that's why this, this number is good until the twenty-eighth. It's not going up past that, a change order, if they find something different, like if there's rock over there, they can go up. That would be a change, maybe we can offer.
But I mean, increases in places of steel or any other?
No, once we sign it on the, on the twenty-eighth, we're locking to that price unless they finally can change from playing. But they're locking, that's why that twenty-eighth is the board, after the twenty-eighth, then steel will change.
So then are, there are any losses in?
Sorry, did you say?
So there are any costs to increases in?
Not after the twenty-eighth, we signed that.
They've locked into the bid, however, I think, I think it was worse than the bid, they can, I think, remember precisely, we have a copy of the bid and their entire, um, response to the bid here. Um, I believe it's a five percent, the, the changelors can't exceed five percent of the entire cost, but I have to look back and try and figure out if they did.
Have they changed orders, will they raise some prices and not some structural change or something?
No, no, they would not, my understanding as far as the bid basically is, one set is on, it's just a matter of whether they go out and then, uh, there's some material change in, um, cost, or some kind of labor, and all that remains the same as far as others. Like you said, if you go up into some new unforeseen, uh, uh, characteristic of, of what they're doing, uh, and we count those all the time when we consider, you know, other types of contracts, but no, as far as this goes, we're not gonna have to stand twice, the, the bid's gonna be very, very close to that number as far as what they have as far as the, it was thirty-seven million.
You mean, cost is gonna be very close to the bid?
Because that's, that's the contract, that's basically what they agreed to, so there's just gonna be some minor litigation, uh, with the change of, of relative to all amounts of contract.
So it's from a fixed price deal, unless there's something they don't anticipate that they see out there that changes the plan. They don't anticipate, which they can do with engineer changelord, and it sounds like you said, engineer changelord cannot exceed five percent of the total humans.
I believe that was the term we had in the, yeah.
Is that, that's my understanding of it, is that, everybody else a sign picture? All right.
Uh, as they're done, do we have any liability, or are we in construction, or is it, or is it all?
When you say liability, are you saying, uh, any additional liability for the, just the cost of the project, or are you talking as far as the?
I don't know, I mean, if we enter for the, just the contract, construction, I don't understand, or?
I don't foresee a bit, any sort of additional liability as far as, or, or liabilities, as far as they're moving. Always get into, into litigation, anytime there's a project, you run into some issue where subcontractor causes to delay this or that. At this point, it's just impossible to foresee things like that, uh, but basically, what we have to reckon with it, uh, with good, good experience, good reputation is understood. So, uh, I don't foresee that being an issue, but fortunately, we can never, ever, side, side around the possibility that fortunately, we have issues with subcontractor.
So they're doing the complete management of the whole, the whole project?
I, I think as far as this issue, I'm not necessarily sure as far as how it's being managed, uh, mayor, uh, have to, Mr. President, is this, uh, still being managed, they, um, as far as project, or is this gonna go?
I think, I think they, they, um, will manage it.
That is my understanding, I'm not sure what you're saying.
We're carrying a contingency, I'm sorry, we're carrying a contingency line for this, no worries, if I, if I understand, it didn't matter, I don't owe them shit, bear with it. But if it's thirty-seven million, five percent, that's roughly about one point eight five million, are we carrying about two million in reserve to carry it to account for any kind of changes or anything like that?
I have not spoken to sources of financials on that, um, as far as the bid, I have looked, see what line might have in there, but I'm not aware of that.
Greg, is that something they might have in there, or something that we would carry as part of our, you know, we're financing it, right? Is that on a borrowing standpoint, or we borrow essentially two million more, and kinda put that over here as a contingency in case we need it?
Pretty sure there's, you can see the grill, trying to prove it.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
I don't know that now, here's my opinion. What should we do with the, like, usually, it's, again, I don't know about that.
I'm all just, I'm all, I'm, yeah, very good. It's out of my bid, it's in fact, it's pretty sure it's.
I do agree with that, see, contingency.
They added, um, whatever the days, or the completion. Part of the change order, uh, they're gonna have, if they extended the bid, part of their extension, what they're, they're gonna have to add a hundred twenty days to whatever their original, um, time frame was. Cause they got a bunk on their steel, their steel delivery, they have to reschedule steel, and then they're hoping to start right now, they can start to descend to January, and so, uh, they're starting, you know, the winter, push out days, and delay them, and so they have an additional hundred twenty.
So let's say they're able to start the first of January, how long will it take to complete it?
What they have is that they, uh, they're, they're.
Six of the, uh, again, talks of time of completion, and it says, uh, substantially complete in five hundred fifty calendar days after the date when the contract commences.
They have, they have, or that's six hundred twenty some days.
So substantial, I mean?
Well, the term that they use is substantially complete in five hundred fifty days after the date when the contract time commences to run.
Can we define what substantial means?
Well, they have to do that, they do, there's a certain point that that's like, you're like ninety-eight percent done, and then you're gonna punch out.
Essentially, if it should be used for the purpose intended, I think that's what you find in definitions and, and law, it says it's substantial, once you can actually use it, and people can actually use it as an offering. You may not have, and all the shrubbery there, you may not necessarily have, you know, this is all pretty, uh, but essentially, it can be.
I will say, just in my own personal job, I'd like to use that, that'd be awesome in defense of contract. Some statute.
It's not a, it's not a defense.
I think it's safe to say two years, it'll take two years.
So is, if they can understand, or, or take a longer, if we don't have to pay, then, how, how is this one?
If you said they, they could make it happen, I don't know what you're saying.
They have to make it happen so they're not late, uh, as far as the term here is, is incentive property, then I don't, I don't understand for that. I'm placing my finger on the litigation damages clause at this moment, but um.
I've gone thirty, that is, I don't see anything in here, I have contingency, but I know, um, I don't know very how guys do it, you know, folks do it in construction. I know in my lot of work, we typically back in what they call MR management, which is contingency. We're paying a lot of money for that over everything, so there may be margin in each one of these items that they're keeping on their side, but probably I would I would think in our borrowing set aside some just in case as well.
I apologize, I'm not finding the other thing, damages clause in here. For three times on this.
Cause you feel like a day to day, almost what that is, that every day, every night.
So whoever did it certainly can hear, protect us. I don't want to use that spot.
For the hard days, you can get in there, I'll I'll have any working days, they give the work, so I probably say the same. I say you give so many, so much time, you're like, so many during days, and then two days, or a job, so I'll just say three, five hundred work days.
So roughly that's sixty, seventy, I don't know yet.
What's that?
It's like thirty seven million. That's sixty seven, I don't know yet.
All right.
I'm sorry, I've gone through four times and I do not see a litigation damages clause or anything considered or anything in discount as far as terms of the actual uh she did.
Have you heard by?
That's something that you can take your post of management if you're more of a mission.
It didn't, it was harder to put together.
Yes, it's part of the order.
That's gonna have that.
They were making that up. Exactly, that's why.
There's not an incentive to get down, sir, there's no damage, there's damages if you don't based on items under their control.
About ten percent, even though that going five.
Essentially, that point wants to watch the changes curve, so we're.
I would absolutely expect to be this, we can pull that too.
My bad, was that ten percent override the five percent that did?
Yeah, I I'm not familiar with the five percent, he said, um, uh, I mentioned, but just state in law, it's ten percent, you're limited, the concept being that, you know, everybody did a project a certain way. And if you're adding more to it, then those folks can have that and see them manage, or they were, the the current contractor is under it, so that's the concept.
As far as uh what we got here, we need to prepare a draft resolution that basically authorizes Mary to execute this letter agreement. Uh, as far as, I guess really the needs of this really comes down to timeline. Um, first, as far as the terms of this, I think, I hope just to be laid out there, basically, first, the city would have to enter funding agreement between the city and district to support payment principal interest and revenue lines. And you have a second component, where the city would accept a bid and issue notice for city to the lowest responsible for construction on the uh interchange base two project. That would be ultimately funded by the regional ones. Then, the other component is that uh we would basically have this annexation of publics that would come in, and all this would be ultimately voted on the same day, vote of fourteen. Now, the way this would work, when the agreement is set up, is if the council were to approve this funding agreement, I'm sorry, funding agreement, the uh the letter agreement today. They would then submit their an- their petition to annex publics tomorrow. Uh, basically, come Monday, according to the timeline, uh, what we would then do is we would both place a place a uh a resolution for the funding agreement. And we replace the proposed ordinance with annexation for first reading Monday. So then, basically, we can have a debate as far as those terms of funding agreement, term, you know, how we can handle annexation. Uh, then that would move us along past election day, where we anticipate that there would be a change in the law that helps us with additions of bids. And then, once we get to the this point, basically, the way this is structured, as of November fourteen, there's an understanding that that all three these components have to happen at the same time. We have to vote through funding agreement, have to vote to accept the bid, and third, council has to approve, could then approve the uh annexation. So this gives us the timeline, and there was some other discussion previously about amending the funding agreement. I think there was discussion from, um, Mr. Bolt said that that was a doable or something that could be done or looked at as far as whether to uh force it into our timeline. And then ultimately, on November fifteen, the city would execute a letter of funding agreement to the district and issue notices for city to the laws, which obviously better. Looking at the the numbers would be uh in the heads. So basically, this is, every one of these components still would require debate, each one of these components would still require a vote to authorize the funding agreement, to authorize the annexation. But what we do here is is basically to bring concept to those terms to start with, basically, the wheels turning to to get us to that. And if anyone has any questions as far as the timeline, that would be on uh page three, uh page two, which sets out starting from uh today, October nineteenth. Moving on to number fifteen, basically, what that timeline.
I need to add, either on the fifth day there, we need we need to publish, we need to publish the annexation, publish on the fifth day.
Right, and of course, the uh the annexation is not official until we actually do the publication, but by this agreement, we could basically do that immediately as of November fifteen. We can do that as quickly as, we can uh set the publishing, we can advance and then the curves of the fifteen or, uh, but we can get it done as as soon as possible, as early as. And fifteen, five, vote.
And all that is exactly the same with the one.
Uh, as far as the agreement that we have in place here, uh, I don't think I look that changes anything, I don't, Mr. Bolt is still on the uh conference call, will anything change? As far as funding agreement, if we were to take that differently.
I think, was that, was that a question for me?
Yeah, yes, sir.
So I I would think we would want to have some mention in this letter agreement of the possibility of a repayment from G O proceeds. Uh, lest they argue, yeah, there's no, there's no reason why Cleveland team would object to that because it gets him paid off faster. But just in case, I would think we want to have something in there that at least represents that possibility as an alternative.
So there would be an initial terms, additional terms, but we don't anticipate that it would be any sort of a deal breaker, anything that would slow down the negotiations over the funding agreement.
Sorry, I couldn't understand that.
I'm sorry, uh, there are additional terms, Mr. Bolt, that we would have to include, but you're saying it would not necessarily uh be anything that'd be a deal breaker or or a slowdown or timeline?
I can't agree with you, I need to read it up.
Somebody have questions about this resolution, how we should do it together, just everybody on track, we just need these dates, mind everybody in.
Well, this is the letter agreement.
Correct, this this doesn't ob- ob- obligate us to do, you know, this is said, we will work toward these dates, and this is what it will look like as we work through. It's the same, we will do, we said we would work toward these dates, and this is how we would proceed. And this gives them assurance that we are working toward it, that they'll go and bring and bring the petition out in public tomorrow. We go to the rule, we're not, we don't, they're not bringing the publics tomorrow.
Right.
So this is all just keeping everybody in check, if we do this, I'll do that on that line.
So what, where would we add the wording about the possible change to the funding agreement? Would that be like where it says um party's finalized form of funding agreement?
It's still funding agreement.
We do it with one or two blocks, all right, so that's what I, that's what I thought when I was, it's directed generally.
Look, I just did the parolance of the series of of that agreement.
Again, I apologize for not having the specifics, I was more as far as the bid, I'd be happy to get all this to you by Monday, as far as the litigation damage etcetera. I just apologize, the uh, looking for this, I didn't have full command over all those terms that y'all were asking, so, but I need that information to you by Monday, so you can form a more additional decision.
Any other questions on this? This letter agreement. Do we want to vote on this after, very end, or we will do that now, or we can do it at the end?
Uh, probably.
You want to talk through the annexation of publics?
Try.
Funding agreement before we want?
As far as the annexation, um, basically, as I understand, the uh the agreement stands here, it's laid out in the letter agreement. They would, there's a vote today that approves this letter agreement, tomorrow they file the petition. Uh, once we get the petition filed, I've heard that it's, I'm in a, we can then, I believe with this timeline, we now have November fourteen, put on wall, track board, donate etcetera, obviously.
Not so.
Just annexation. Uh, so basically, where that would leave us is by the agreement here, we cannot act on that until November fourteen, we actually do the vote, and then the publication will be the next day. Uh, the camp for Cleveland, they have everything they need in order to make that petition filed tomorrow. Uh, there was some talk about, uh, we'd actually filled one out, sent it to, sent it over to them, some information that they had actually put on the last petition. But apparently, there was a change in the legal entity, uh, so they would have to change that. So uh basically, the owner just signs off on the petition, uh, they have all the information they need, they know that it's due tomorrow. Once we get this vote, they have been filed out, and then the year starts rolling as far as the annexation.
Any questions about that? Want to talk through the funding agreement at all?
I would, uh, if anybody has any questions, uh, Mr. Bolt has been preparing these and has uh four hundred terms and is negotiating back and forth, and I think we're to a point now where we're close. There's still maybe a few terms here and there that uh still need to be ironed out between now and say Monday, before we actually present. The funding agreement that we present for the first reading may look different than the one we presented today, uh, but only a few tweets here and there. Uh, but I would refer Mr. Bolt as far as if anybody has any questions about the funding agreement.
You have any highlights or comments, for anything you'd love to?
No, I think, I think Rush's summary in PowerPoint, you know, covered the important parts. Uh, and 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 uh Brian's point that we did have a few things to iron out, and some language questions to resolve, but we'll get those done, uh, we hope the next day or so.
I think for us, your comment is valid, if we work toward a one single G O bond for the for the city, you hear the thoughts.
I think it was pretty thorough from what the parts up back to here, and you know, there's, there are certainly some upfront statements, on the G O. Uh, and we can have a big question in my mind, which is my legal question, it's a, it's a credit question, it is, what's the impact on the city's little G O market? If it needs to throw things, and and Rush is already addressed that, let me discuss that with the great folks, but I I don't understand.
Questions, comments?
Um, in terms of path forward, if we pass this resolution, which does not guarantee that we can determine three, but if we pass this resolution. Then our action steps would be to go ahead and start directing the other version as well, so that we'd be ready for a first reading, which other version would do. And wait to hear from Mr. Ross on what he's hearing about our criteria, and how that might impact G O.
Any other discussion y'all, you know, missed before we were, we were voting on the whole, whole letter? All right, Rush, I mean, I got your name.
I'm first time I'm seeing.
Well, I'm sure we can, we can see if we type, have we known what they could do. And probably the first reading would be the best choice. Oh, but I mean, but it gives you a kind of a red net on our version. Yes, this would, so your question is if this funding agreement, whichever one we end up coming, would replace the. Yes, the other one would go away and this one would replace.
So now, what we're trying to note here, I ask whether the twenty eighteen agreement just completely does well, once we start this one. A lot of things in the old. Because I've forgotten what I had.
Probably only close the other work session and open. Specials, all of this, it all, but.
I think I have to, but I think it may, maybe better just closing the specialists to.
Make a motion to close the work session?
Green discussion, we get a vote on close. So now, I'll open the uh special session of Madison City Council. You need a real call for that? I don't think we need to vote on close, it'd be, I think that's what it's. Do you want to call a real call on the special call session? Okay.
Mayor Finley?
Yes.
Councilmember Oglewski?
Here.
Councilmember Spears?
Yes.
Councilmember Powell? Councilwoman St. Shaw?
Here.
Councilmember Harlett?
Here.
Councilmember DeZee?
Yeah.
Councilmember Seaver?
Here.
One, so, we'll, we'll move forward, we'll have one motion tonight, that we have one, one resolution, that we can give a motion on that, move to approve.
Second.
Motion second, special?
Um, I have a question, Rush, that you turn, this particular draft of the letter agreement, do you have it signed already, by Mr. Rinn?
No, no, they have not signed it yet, we have to get their signature, uh, but it's not been executed in advance of the meeting.
Okay, so, uh, Mr. Bolt has asked me a question with respect to, um, paragraph one of the letter agreement. Since we're contemplating an option, um, of either going with two bonds or one. This question is, currently, uh, the letter agreement in paragraph one says the Stephen entrance agreement, in the city and the district to support payment of principal, of interest on revenue bonds to be issued by the district. Mr. Bolt is asking, or to pay directly the principal and interest on the existing district bond. So if we could add that and amend paragraph one to give us two options.
Absolutely, that, that would give the council the options, being able to vote tonight, and be able to go either direction, yes, I would recommend that.
Issue that letter agreement with that amendment, and then, um, sign it, if it passes.
What do you do to amend the motion?
So I move to, uh, amend the current motion, moving to, uh, approve the letter agreement in paragraph one, by adding warrants, or to pay directly. Principal and interest on the existing district bond. Before the process is the funding agreement. Okay.
Nobody have a, um, motion on the floor to vote? And I have Seaver and Oleski, do we want to take on that one, or do we just move into another?
I see.
Very weird.
So we have to.
We didn't vote the first one.
But we have to.
The way to, to hold on the amendments, we have to, they just get a, a motion and a second, on an amendment to that motion.
Okay.
So then it'd be, I guess, a special, if it was a special, we'd vote on the amendment, and then we'd be able to, the overall agreement.
Your motion's still out there, but we're gonna take my amendment first.
Right.
So on that, me and Mark?
Mm-hmm.
Um, on the amendment, I made the motion in, in terms.
John and I are on the resolution.
Oh, okay.
So this, this, we'll, we'll vote on that first, so we can vote this.
Start with remain, come back at you. Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Oleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaver?
Aye.
Really, that's now, the most important part, it's about, it's just.
Esmond.
Esmond.
Council, Councilmember Seaver?
Aye.
Councilmember Oleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell? Council President Shaw?
Aye.
Councilmember Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
We hear the motion passes, so that's really all I have on, on, except I, if anybody else had any other discussion.
Thanks to Rush for being up here, Preston for being on the phone, uh, Greg for neighbor, a ton of time that you guys have invested in giving us to this point, and we still have a lot of work to do. Um, but thank you guys for your time, and Johnny, thanks for coming also, being up here and being here to support us, we appreciate that.
See, I mean, I mean, everybody's working on, making their office.
Well, we all, you guys have carried the, the walk for all, for a walk all time.
Very good. That's it, motion to adjourn? Hey, say, thank you, President Rush, I've been born on the phone. I appreciate it.